Aye.
Aye. Public open forum, anyone here for public open forum? Public open forum? Approval of the planning commission minutes, meeting minutes on 12/20/17.
So move to approve.
Second.
Call for vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing, now we're gonna have a public hearing and discussion. We're actually having two, we're gonna open both hearings at the same time. One is for the Batuminus Roadways Columbus preliminary plat. And the other is for the Batuminus Roadways Columbus site plan review and CUP. And at this time, I'd like to ask the secretary to read both the formalities and the notices as published.
Okay. Notices hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the City of Columbus Planning Commission on Wednesday, January 17th, 2018, at 7 o'clock PM, or as soon thereafter as parties may be heard in the City Hall located at 16319 Kettle River Boulevard, Columbus, Minnesota, to consider a request for preliminary plat, Batuminus Roadways Columbus, combining two lots and creating one new lot. The hearing shall continue until all evidence and testimony has been received. Applicant, Batuminus Roadways Kent Peterson, property owners, I-35's Business Park LLC, Minnesota Land Spec LLC, ZAMZO Holdings LLC, William J. Williams. Property location, 13445 and 13363 West Freeway Drive, Columbus, Minnesota. Legal description as published. Submitted to the Forest Lake Times on Thursday, December 28th, 2017. Published in the Forest Lake Times on Thursday, January 4th, 2018. Posted on Thursday, January 4th, 2018. Notices hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the City of Columbus Planning Commission on Wednesday, January 17th, 2018, at 7 o'clock PM or as soon thereafter as parties may be heard in the City Hall located at 16319 Kettle River Boulevard, Columbus, Minnesota, to consider a request for a conditional use permit, CUP, and site plan review to allow Batuminus Roadways to allow the development and construction of an asphalt production facility with outdoor storage and handling of various construction materials at the property described below in the light industrial LI district. The hearing shall continue until all evidence and testimony has been received. Applicant, Batuminus Roadways Kent Peterson, property owners, I-35's Business Park LLC, Minnesota Land Spec LLC, ZAMZO Holdings LLC, and William J. Williams. Property location, 13445 and 13363 West Freeway Drive, Columbus, Minnesota. Legal description as published. Submitted to the Forest Lake Times on Thursday, December 28th, 2017. Published in the Forest Lake Times on Thursday, January 4th, 2018. Posted on Thursday, January 4th, 2018. The public hearing procedure for the Planning Commission for the City of Columbus. The City of Columbus Planning Commission consists of volunteers appointed by the City Council. Our decisions are advisory. All final decisions are made by the elected City Council. The Planning Commission will conduct public hearings in accordance with the following guidelines. Public testimony. The purpose of the public hearing is to ensure that everyone with an interest in the matter has an opportunity to present testimony as evidence in support of his or her position. Fair, open, and respectful. This commission is committed to conducting fair and open process and to provide everyone an opportunity to be heard. We expect that everyone will participate in an atmosphere of civility and mutual respect. Speaking out of term will not be tolerated. Relevant testimony. Please refrain from personal attacks or references to matters that are not directly relevant to this application or ordinance. Appointed spokesperson. If there are several among you with a common point of view, you may appoint a common spokesperson. Speakers sign in, the Chair required speakers tonight to sign in to testify. A speaker will not be called on for a second time unless addressed by the commission. Orderly administration of testimony. The Chair may impose a time limit on speakers. One person will have the floor at a time. We ask that you listen respectfully and hold your comments until it is your turn. If testimony is repetitive, you will be asked to either move on to new information or yield the floor. Review and recommendation. After reviewing all the evidence, we formulate a recommendation to the City Council along with a summary of our findings.
So if everybody, everybody understand there was a sign-in sheet. If you want to speak tonight, you were, you had to sign the sheet. And then we're doing a three-minute time limit. If anybody wants to give their minutes to another speaker, that's fine. So we'll start the hearing by asking the applicants to please come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. My name is Kent Peterson, I'm the CEO of Batuminus Roadways. Batuminus Roadways is a construction company that was founded in 1946 and started in South Minneapolis. We have three asphalt plants, one in Minneapolis, one in Shakopee, and one in Ever Grove Heights. We're a family-owned business and employ about 170 people. We perform asphalt production and paving, excavation and grading, and asphalt maintenance and milling. Some of the types of projects we construct include recreational and athletic services, parking lots and streets. And that's it. So this, this is a map of the Minneapolis-St. Paul area. It shows the, our plant locations in the, in orange along with the Columbus site up in the, towards the upper right there. And this would, this is, shows the Columbus plant site with the market area showing about 115, or 15-mile radius around the plant. Batuminus Roadways is a union company and we pay our employees, including benefits, between $45 and $55 per hour. So, oops, you missed one. So to serve, serve the Columbus market area, we expect to have about 71 people. That includes plant personnel, construction crews, and truck drivers. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Joe Raddick, he's an engineer with Carlson-McCain.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Joe Raddick and I work with Carlson-McCain. I'm the design engineer for the project and I've been working closely with the applicant, Kent Peterson, over the past several months to develop plans for the facility that will adequately serve the needs of Batuminus Roadways while meeting the rules and regulations of the various regulatory agencies. We have submitted materials in support of the preliminary plat, conditional use permit, and site plan review applications that are contained in your packet. I would like to bring your attention to some of these materials. Preliminary plat. As part of the application, the City of Columbus requested that the property be platted. As a result, a preliminary plat of the property which proposes to plat the property as one lot was submitted with the application. Yeah, I suppose I could do my own. So currently, it's two parcels. You can see the one smaller parcel here and then the larger parcel. We would be proposing to plat that as one continuous lot for the proposed use. Site construction plans. The site construction plans found in the application materials include details on the various site features, including paved areas, plant location, stormwater management areas, et cetera. These plans have been prepared in accordance with the state, city, county, watershed, and other regulatory agency requirements and include site construction plans, grading, drainage, and erosion control plans, and landscaping plan. And there you can see the various plans. That's the site plan, grading, drainage, and erosion control plan, and landscape plan. And there's other plans as well, but. The screening plan. The application materials contain a screening plan showing the proposed screening of the site. Most notably, a berm and fence will be placed along West Freeway Drive, which is down along here, there's a fence and berm here. There is eight-foot pine trees along the south property line here. And there is also a fence along the east side of the site there. A little shaky. Wetland, or so, there you can see a view on Freeway Drive facing south. And you can see the gate to the site, the fence, trees along the fence. And the next one, I think, is showing the view from the south. You can see the eight-foot pine trees here screening from the south. And then there's the building. Wetlands. A wetland delineation was completed as part of the site planning. Some wetland impacts will occur as a result of the project. The impacted wetlands will be replaced on-site. The applicant is currently working with Rice Creek Watershed District and the Army Corps of Engineers for the permitting these impacts. We have been working with these governmental entities for several months and believe we will have final approval within the next month. Noise. It is our professional opinion that noise generated from the operation of the facility will not have a noticeable effect at the boundaries of the site. The site is located between two interstate highways and the background interstate traffic noise levels is at or above predicted noise levels generated from the operation of the facility. Further discussion regarding noise impacts from the truck traffic associated with the facility can be found in the technical memo prepared by Wink and included in this application. Next slide. This memo concludes that the traffic from the proposed facility is not expected to adversely affect human health, equine health, or the environment. Odor. Odor is discussed in detail in Wink's letter to the MPCA dated August 9th, 2017. Next slide. This letter, which was submitted with the application, concludes that there is no predicted impact of odor from the proposed asphalt facility and trucks and its operations on the public. Air emissions. Air emissions are also discussed in detail in both the technical memo and the letter to the MPCA prepared by Wink. The final conclusion of the analysis is that the, since the project, since the projected impacts of the proposed project meet state and federal air standards, there would be no expected adverse impact to humans or horses. Dust management. Batuminus Roadways has submitted a proposed dust management plan with the application. Both driveways and the areas in and around the facility will be paved to minimize dust and tracking material onto West Freeway Drive. The gravel drive areas and stockpiles will be watered as needed to prevent fugitive dust from leaving the site. Water will also be used during crushing operations to prevent dusty conditions. The plan addresses dust generated by truck traffic on-site as well as dust generated during crushing operations. Traffic management. The site has been configured to allow for efficient import and export of materials. The traffic management plan submitted with the application shows that the southerly driveway will function as the main entrance to the site. In general, trucks will either head north on Freeway Drive up to Lake Drive and Interstate 35, which, well, you can understand. Or south on Freeway Drive down to Main Street and Interstate 35E. Equine health. Running Aces operates a horse facility located approximately two miles north of the site on Freeway Drive. There's been an issue raised by Running Aces as of the impact of the proposed facility on equine health. Both of Wink's memos address this issue and conclude that the proposed project will not have an adverse effect on equine health. Next slide. In addition, Batuminus Roadways engaged Dr. Bruce Verin, a licensed veterinarian specializing in veterinary services for horses, primarily thoroughbred riding and racehorses and sports horses since 1982, to complete an analysis of this issue. After a thorough review of the record, Dr. Verin prepared an extensive report which was submitted to the Planning Commission on Thursday and it is included as part of your packet. In this report, Dr. Verin concludes that based upon his 35 years as an equine veterinarian, it is his professional opinion that the air emissions from the proposed asphalt facility, if constructed and operated as outlined in the report, would have no adverse impact upon the horses stabled, trained, and raced at Running Aces racetrack. MPCA and environmental assessment worksheet. In late July of 2017, a citizen's petition requesting an environmental assessment worksheet was submitted to the Environmental Quality Board. Next slide. The MPCA reviewed this petition and found that, quote, "There are no potential significant environmental effects reasonably expected to occur from the Batuminus Roadways, Inc. hot mix asphalt plant project and that there is insufficient basis to require the preparation of an environmental assessment worksheet," end quote. The petition was denied. This concludes my presentation. Mr. Peterson's attorney, Ken Rolfe, would now like to address the commission. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Ken Rolfe, attorney for Batuminus Roadways. As you know, the city's zoning ordinances contain a variety of requirements and specific performance standards applicable to an asphalt production facility. We believe that our proposed application complies with all requirements of the city's zoning ordinances. In addition, we have supplemented the application materials with a property valuation study prepared by KW Commercial and a letter from Kent Peterson concerning the payments of an annual reimbursement to the city. These documents have also been made part of your packet. So the task before the Planning Commission tonight is to consider the application and determine what reasonable and practical conditions will become part of the conditional use permit. To that end, last Friday, city staff circulated a report which recommended a lengthy list of conditions for approval of the preliminary plat, site plan, and conditional use permit. Although numerous and somewhat onerous, my client is willing to accept each and every one of the recommended conditions proposed in that planning report. That said, we'd like to thank staff, the Planning Commission, the City Council, for all the effort that has been put forth in processing this application. Thank you.
Any questions for the applicants?
Just one, sir.
Go ahead.
In the information that we got tonight, a letter from the City of Lionel Lakes, "We respectfully request consideration to extend the landscaping easterly of the eastern edge of the stormwater management pond." Whereabouts is that? Can you go back to that map?
Elizabeth, could you go back to the screening plan? And if that overview of the colored one would probably be the easiest. Right there. Down a couple. Okay, so we're proposing eight-foot pine trees to about, if I can steady my hand here, right in there. And then here, we're proposing a fence. So that's kind of screens the rest of this. We could continue the pine trees, but we didn't because there's an existing stand of trees here. So we decided to go with a fence going off the northeast corner of the proposed building all the way to the stormwater management plan.
Easterly edge of the stormwater, so that'd be.
Oh, over here? Yeah, so this is a.
They specifically call out eastern edge of the stormwater management pond.
So east of the stormwater management plan would be this area up here. And this is a existing stand of trees that we're proposing to leave in place. And then there, this is all wetland. As you go south of the property, everything north of this red line that I'm drawing here is wetland. So we didn't feel the need to, to provide additional screening here because there will never be houses or any use back here because this is all wetland. I'm not saying we couldn't, but we just didn't think it was necessary.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicants? Any other questions? Okay, at this time, if you gentlemen want to take a seat, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
At this time, we're gonna open the hearing to the public. In which I will call on, it'd be number two, Lynn Carver Quinn. State your name.
Good evening. Lynn Carver Quinn, 7540 152nd Lane Northeast.
Uh, we need a motion to open the, to open the hearing. We need to open the hearing. Sorry.
We did open the hearing.
My apologies.
To the public.
Okay.
Yep. The hearing is now open to the public.
Alright.
Yep.
So, this is our last attempt. You have a recommendation to make tonight. So I just wanted to clear up a few things so that you have additional information. This group of citizens have done more research in detail than I think we really should have had to. But, you know, people can say things and unless you come up with a solution that it wasn't true, you're gonna believe it. So I'm gonna clear up a few lies that were led up to this just because I feel I need to. Number one, it was stated that Running Aces was lying to us residents and pushing us to tell us what to do. That is a lie. We meet, they're not involved in our meetings. It was stated at the last council meeting I was at that Running Aces does not employ anybody that lives in the City of Columbus, which is a lie because I live with one of the residents that does work for Running Aces. So that is not true. So don't say things to make it look better for yourself. At the last meeting I was at, the mayor said he was a stupid little mayor of a stupid little city, that's not a lie. We are a quality city with residents looking to improve the quality of life. It's not a stupid little city. What this comes down to is needs versus wants. What does this city need and what does some of the people want? It does, what we need is to sell the property that the city owns. That should be the first agenda and not just to want what people want. Citizens sign petitions and you're appointed, the city officials are elected to care about the residents of this city, not just somebody trying to come in here. I was told to, oh, get on the list to be on the Planning Commission. Well, if there's a list of people to be on this Planning Commission, that should tell you that you have citizens concerned and wanting to help out. One thing, the truck drivers, maybe not all of them, but I have relatives that are truck drivers and they're independent contractors. They are not employees. So the numbers that we just heard, how many of them are employees versus independent contractors? I was also told by these truck drivers that to say there's gonna be no odor is a lie and to say that the traffic isn't gonna impact our city is a lie because it will. One other thing I want to say is, I'm gonna address this and I was going to last meeting, but I didn't. But there are hard decisions, but that's part of life. You, you don't have an easy decision to make. But guess what, it's part of life, but you owe it to the residents to make the right decision. In 2000, I was taking care of my husband who died of cancer when council member Krebs asked where I was when they were dealing with Running Aces coming in. So you know what, life is hard. This is not hard. This is a choice you made to make decisions based on what's best for the residents of this city. We're not against business, but we want the business that we can support and that we can go to. And I think you should, tonight's your last night, stop this. This has destroyed a lot of relationships and it has put a big damper in this city. Thank you.
Number three, Ron. That's right.
Good evening, I was here on your November 15th. My name is Ron Hanagraff, 9222, 181st Avenue Northeast in Columbus. I've been a resident here for 40 years. I was on this Planning Commission back in the 90s. And I'll just start off that I'm opposed to where we are tonight. I had no idea after I was at the November 15th that this thing has gone this far. I'm opposed to the asphalt plant being there, even though it won't even affect me because I'm probably about 10 miles away from it. But I'd like to save my time for some more facts that are coming up. I have one question, Chairman. Can you ask a question, Mr. Peterson? How many jobs that they have, I think it was 71 on the board up there? How many of those people live in Columbus? Can you ask that question?
Weekend later, we'll, after we get through the public, one of the Commissioners can ask them.
Okay, I'd like to save the rest of my time then, whatever I have, for one of my colleagues. Is that okay?
I guess to keep it a little more logistical, I'd prefer that either you waive your time and you hand it to somebody else. I can't keep track of two minutes and five seconds on one guy and a minute 10 on another.
Alright, then I'll, I'll stay right with what I'm on. I read the McComb group. I've talked to people, business people, owners, on everybody on, not everybody, but a number of them down Fenway. And, I mean, down freeway. And I haven't found one yet that's for this. So I don't know where all this push is to get this down there. I also look at, back to the McComb report that was brought up. I don't know, did the city pay for this?
I believe that was Running Aces, was it it? Running Aces, Hearns Trac paid for that.
Who paid for it?
Running Aces paid for it.
Okay. Well, I don't know then if the facts are true or what, but reading through them and seeing what the Holiday Station pays for taxes compared to what this is gonna cause, it just doesn't seem feasible to, to even invest into this project down there for what it's gonna cost us as citizens. And lastly, I'd like to say if you're gonna recommend this to the, to the council, that you protect us as citizens by putting provisions in here no less than what they have to do in Mendota, Shakopee, and all these other places, or Blaine. Make sure that they have the same conditions that we can have here to protect us. Thank you.
Thank you. Number four, Marlene. Okay, they can just bring that up when they come up. Number six, Norma.
Norma Hoyer, 8289 20th Avenue North, Lionel Lakes. I am done already?
Nope. You got extra time.
I probably am the closest residence to the proposed site of the asphalt plant. I do have some questions. One is, what's your fire plan? The last time a fire went through this, this area, there were, we called the fire department, 150 acres burnt, and the fire department was unable to respond because of so many grass fires in the area. So myself, I was 17 at the time and my two younger brothers managed the fire. Probably not well, but it did save the man's barn and house. And since I'm the next house in line, I'd like to know what the fire plan is. You can't count on the fire department to handle any type of fire. That's, would be an interesting thing. I don't know where that is, I haven't heard it brought up. Is there a fire crew on-site to handle it in an emergency? Also, mentioned was the grinding noise. I like to sleep with my windows open and I do take a nap. I'm in the age group where you're allowed to nap now in the afternoon. And I'm also wondering, what is the decibel level of the grinding material? That should be also stated and made public. I know anything over 85 decibels is harmful to hearing and you do lose hearing from it. My last question is about the depreciation of my property. According to the county, it's been depreciated significantly in the last six months. And my understanding is the City of Columbus would be responsible for reimbursing the public for any depreciation to their property because of the construction of the. for any depreciation to their property because of the construction of the asphalt plant. And counting up around in a mile radius, I believe I counted 305 residences. And if mine's right now sitting between 50 and $75,000 depreciation, you multiply that by 300 and some, do we bill the city of Columbus or do we send the asphalt plant the bill?
We got 31, 30 more seconds. Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven seconds.
You did good.
I would implore you, I would beg you, be a good neighbor. Be a good neighbor. I've lived there for 62 years. My family has. We've always helped each other out. We've been there for each other.
Thank you. Number seven? Number seven? Okay. Number eight?
I'd like to donate to somebody who's in opposition to the plan.
Number nine?
My name is Vern Royson, 14016 Juilliard. First time I was up here, the council was laughing about horses. "Oh, is this another horse talk?" When I said, "No, it's about the people," they all shut up and I never heard him talk yet. Because he certainly won't answer our questions. But it is apparent that this council has no concern for the people living in Columbus or the people in the adjoining cities. At one time, we made concessions not to allow the asphalt trucks to run during horse racing. Eventually, that was all taken out, but there has been no concessions for the people in the city. You have made nothing. You want it here, because apparently the city is in dire straits, whatever, to make a few bucks, some of the bribe money from Batuminas. That is bribe, you're not here yet. You're gonna lose more money in the long run. Just the property taxes will decrease. You're gonna lose that base. You're gonna have class suits for devaluation of the property. There are 400 and some houses, 1,200 people in that area. And you are gonna allow this to happen? There is no reason other than for Batuminas to make more money to be this close in to a residential area. And that's facts. If this plant should happen, you should be helping the people out in some way as making sure air and water pollution sensors are installed on the plant at numerous places and monitored by other agencies. As far as, once it's up and running, what if Batuminas goes bankrupt? Who is gonna clean it up? New Brighton, they had to clean up their mess. It was over a million dollars to clean it up. What would happen if they stayed working? They got hit by numerous lightnings, everything went up in fire. All that hazardous material in our water system, are they gonna stay and clean it up even if they go over the value of their, of that land? No. They're gone. Who is gonna clean it up? There should be an escrow or...
There's, yeah, there's minutes.
There should be an escrow or bond that's put up by Batuminas to cover that cost. The ones I have seen in other locations, it's what the approximate cost now would be to clean that site up times three and a half. Because then you're sure that it's gonna cover what's needed. If it's not needed in the lifetime of Batuminas, well, it goes back to the Batuminas. But there is one other thing I would like to talk about, and this is a member of the council. I've been, we've all been talking to Anoka County, many times to Metro, the mayors of Lionel Lakes, Centerville. But the one time we talked to some people from Anoka County, they asked us about, "What's going on with your mayor?" And we knew what was happening, you know, and we said, "Well, we would like to know." Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Vern, we gotta keep it to, keep it to the Batuminas.
The council member is for Batuminas.
Mr. Chair, if I may, wanna keep it on the findings, on the applications at hand, the applications at hand.
We're talking about the asphalt plant, correct? We're talking about anybody's interest in the asphalt plant.
If you can keep it to that.
Well, it's about the council member.
That would be personal.
It's not personal. If I was gonna go personal, it'd go a lot deeper.
It would be, I don't think it would be relevant to the...
It is relevant, because he's using his position for his own financial, personal gain. That is illegal.
If you have any kind of proof or anything, I mean, I wanna stick to the facts here. We gotta stay on track.
Okay.
We can't start wandering off on...
If you want that, you know, I've talked to the head assessor. I will get the information from him, because he will not talk to or allow the county assessor on his property. He won't even set up a meeting with your local assessor, who is part of the problem also.
Stay on track, Vern.
We will substantiate that, because that is already happening legally.
Number 10. 10 donated? Number 11?
Hi. My name is Barb Bobic. I live at 8414 140th Avenue Northeast.
Hold on one second. I got number 11, is Margie Royson?
Yeah, we switched.
Oh, you switched, okay. Okay.
And we moved here about a year and a half ago, and quite frankly, we thought we moved into Mayberry, USA. We found the neighbors so welcoming, the kids in the park so active and pleasant, and the environments so beautiful, with the deer, the wild turkey, the songbirds. So the news of an asphalt plant was very disturbing. More alarming was a personal encounter we had with a city councilman on August 2nd of 2017, after a planning commission meeting. A group of citizens, myself, my son, my daughter-in-law, were outside discussing the door-to-door canvas.
Barb, are we, are we sticking with the Batuminas Roadways testimony?
Well, what was said applies to the asphalt plant, if I can finish it.
Well, if it pertains to the CUP and the site review plan...
I'll just go on then. It was a very disturbing comment. Perhaps I'll just have to suck it up, I guess. Anyway, we continued our canvassing and despite the objections of a majority of voters in Columbus, over 800, we're here again today with, for a public hearing for a CUP for Batuminas. Our concerns from the beginning have been that the location is not compatible with the Columbus comprehensive plan and that with 400 homes and 1,200 residents within a two-mile radius of the plant, we have significant quality of life issues that directly oppose the Columbus ordinance, Section 7A 543, that prohibits activities, processes, materials, equipments, and conditions of operation that are detrimental to any person's property, general welfare by reason of excessive production of traffic, noise, smoke, fumes, et cetera. The health risks for the residents are also significant. According to the Federal Department of Health and Human Services, the International Agency for Research on Cancer, and the EPA, naphthalene, formaldehyde, benzene, mercury, and cadmium are all toxic pollutants emitted by all asphalt plants. And they're too small to be captured by the baghouse pollution filters. As they are considered to be fugitive emissions, they are emitted during loading and hauling by dump trucks when the asphalt is in the semi-solid state, when it hasn't hardened yet. So they're fugitive emissions that pull two miles along that freeway drive. Benzene is a known cause of leukemia in children. Scientists even know how it changes the DNA of children to cause cancer. The fugitive emissions of toxic chemicals cannot accurately be measured, and that's an EPA fact. According to the health organizations, the diesel exhaust from the 500 daily trucks is a known Group 1 carcinogen, which to us laymen means that it causes cancer. My questions to the planning commission is, given the facts, will you protect your citizens? Will you agree to put provisions in the CUP that require either Batuminas or the city to pay for the monitoring of the residents' wells in this two-mile radius, including those in Lionel and Hugo, on a yearly basis? Can you provide for an air quality monitoring system outside the boundaries of the property to test for benzene, mercury, formaldehyde, and other toxic chemicals as a condition of this Batuminas CUP? The EPA has developed a number of fence-line air sensors. According to Inver Grove Heights City Planner, Alan Hunting, and the Shakopee City Planner, Kyle Zavoda, the two largest Batuminas plants are in heavy industrial areas, so the CUPs for those cities don't address some of the issues that are concerned for us Columbus citizens. Finally, the EPA has said that the asphalt plant should not be built in close proximity to humans and livestock. Will you do what you can to protect the quality of life and the health of our children and residents? Thank you.
Thank you. Number 12.
Margie Royson, 14016 Juilliard Street Northeast. And she's here because I tend to lose my voice frequently when I'm talking, so. Noting many of the, I'm gonna take a different approach here. I'm gonna talk about, we always hear about good neighbor Batuminas, so, Batuminas, so I'm gonna talk about good neighbors. Knowing many of the written facts regarding pollution generated by hot tar, why would a good neighbor choose to build an asphalt plant in a populated area? Why would a good neighbor, the Columbus Planning Commission and the Columbus City Council, risk the health of five communities that includes over 400 homes and over 1,200 people? That's in a two-mile radius around the building site. If you choose to play the supreme being, excuse me, you're endangering an innocent public. Several years ago, a book came out, and it talks about the afterlife and the people we meet there. It included people we knew and people we had never set eyes on, but we still had an effect on them. Remember the guy you maybe handed a quarter to one time? He needed it for his parking meter, because he was out of change. You, do you remember him? Probably not. He remembers you, because that quarter allowed him to see his mother in her lasting moments. He will never forget you. The same will go the other way for people you are choosing to put in danger. The book and our influence on others is eye-opening. If any of you would like a copy, I'd be happy to send you one. Why would a good neighbor choose to build between two freeways that many people use daily to commute to and from work? This congested freeway area is already overloaded.
Yep. Yet Batuminas will add 500 trucks trips each day, so travelers can also enjoy the effect of asphalt fumes on the overloaded road. The freeway traffic will be recipients of the toxic fumes and pollution, as well as the surrounding residents if they experience it daily. As long as possible, I will continue to attempt to prevent the construction of this plant and/or fight to have it removed if it should be built in such a populated area. If you vote to allow good neighbor Batuminas Roadways or any similar businesses into our area, I'd like to know if you truly can go home and look at yourself in the mirror as you ready for bed tonight without wondering, "What the hell have I done?"
Thank you. Number 13? 13? Okay. 14? 14?
Hi. My name is Mark Hanson. I live at 2280 Enfield Court, Fort Slight. We hear a lot of people up here talking about the negativity of it, not the positives. There's a lot of people in support of this here. This creates good-paying jobs. It's gonna be good for the community. It's gonna lower costs, because we're gonna add competition in the marketplace. And Batuminas Roadways is an outstanding company. I'm not employed with them, but I am in the construction industry. And I hear a lot of people up here talking about the facts of all this pollution. That's like saying, me and all my brothers and sisters who work in this highway-heavy industry are going to work in intentionally endangering our lives. And that's just nonsense. We have strict standards we have to follow. Everyone, all these job sites, they don't pollute. You can't pollute. We fall under heavier standards than any one of you people who live on a gravel road. They, it's good for the community, and there's a lot of people back here that are in support of it, that are from here, and I'm speaking on their behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. Number 15? 15? 15? Troy Munson? 16? Number 16?
Good evening. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me. My name is Sherri Sarah. I live at 1975 73rd Street in Centerville. And although, although this proposal is not in my direct backyard, I am opposed to it. I work for an environmental testing company that does testing for asphalt plants, so I know the conditions that they are under and the regulations that they have to follow. But today, when I mentioned it to some coworkers, I asked them out of the blue what they thought of an asphalt plant being in their backyard, and they said, "They're dirty and stinky." And I am not in direct correlation to where this plant will be located, but I do live off of 20th Avenue, where some of the trucks will be traveling. I am a single parent. I have lived in Centerville for 20 years, and I do not want this plant anywhere close to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Number 17?
Good evening. My name is Shelley Logren, and I live at 14063 Furman Street. Well, here we are again. My last comment to you at the last public hearing was that we, the citizens of Columbus, were wanting you, the Planning Commission, to recommend following our city ordinances, our comprehensive plan, and at least attempt to honor our motto of rural nature, urban access. We were counting on you, and some of you disappointed us. Because we have not had adequate access to the city council, some of my comments are also designed to be heard by them with the hopes that those comments will also inspire you in your vote on this subject tonight. In our last meeting, you voted without discussion to change the text amendment to our existing ordinance regarding light industry despite extensive testimony and in conflict with the comprehensive plan and ordinances designed to protect the Columbus City citizenry. Specifically mentioned portions of these documents have been covered by other speakers. The new ordinance has been retrofitted to meet Batuminas Roadways plans with an agreement to an expansion of a cement plant on the adjoining lot. This text amendment was suggested by the Batuminas lawyer as a maneuver to avoid amending the Columbus Comprehensive Plan, requiring the Metropolitan Council's approval of an amended comprehensive plan with an estimated six-month delay. At our last public hearing, an explanation of the McCombs report was cut short due to the three-minute time limit. We have not seen or heard any response to the report issued by that respected research firm, which outlined many negative effects of an asphalt plant to our city, including, one, desirability as a location for other legitimate light industries; two, declining property values; and, three, a limited tax base afforded by this type of business. I know. I know that there's that pesky potential $75,000 to $100,000 cloaked in benevolence to be paid annually by Batuminas Roadways on their terms, with the disposal of the funds decided upon by the city. This is a little reminiscent of the text amendment to our ordinance being substituted for the accepted procedure to amend the comprehensive plan. It appears to be an indiscriminate fee being collected as a substitute for accepted taxation procedure. I, for one, understand the reasoning for these actions. I do not respect the intent demonstrated in such maneuvers. The precedent set by welcoming Batuminas Roadways as our neighbor will slam the door on so many more businesses that may just be seeing the beginning of opportunities in our northeast corner of the Twin Cities, doors that are being opened by improved roads and access points. Mr. Fratellone, along with Batuminas Roadways, recognizes this, as does the McCombs report and running aces. Mr. Fratellone, along with the Batuminas Roadways, is just the first to throw out the bait to us in hopes of catching a growing opportunity. Bait which has been carefully set by Batuminas Roadways that is informationally supported by a national organization, the National Asphalt Pavement Association, and the Minnesota Pavement Association, and lawyers that we could not dream of hiring for our local concerns. These are entities that have faced angry neighborhoods across the nation, as well as locally. Promises are overflowing on the CUP in front of you. Many of the early questions were answered by Batuminas Roadway with no proof other than their own testimony. The council, after an asphalt site visit, proclaimed Batuminas Roadway was a good fit for Columbus and never looked back at a real denial of the proposal, even stating that "we," meaning Columbus, "do not want to lose your business." Batuminas Roadways CEO Kent Peterson claimed that no one complained at the other affected communities about the odors, and yet before you, Batuminas Roadways has stated that there are odors which may need remediation with no evidence that the remediation will solve the problem to the citizens' satisfaction. There is a questionable trend in the demands from Batuminas Roadway. When Mr. Peterson first spoke to us, he claimed that the crushing would be two times a year for two weeks, bringing us to a total of a month of crushing sound, 12 hours a day, six days a week, eight months of warm weather. Now let's fast forward. The ensuing original CUP submitted stated that the crushing would be two times a year for three to four weeks, bringing us to a possible total of two months of crushing sound. Again, fast forward. In our new text amendment and in the CUP before you, we are now to expect crushing sounds twice a year for five weeks, equalling two and a half months. Batuminas Roadways has also firmed up a nebulous claim to occasionally operate outside of normal agreed-upon hours. These may not be broken promises yet, but they say that this occasionally has morphed into the concrete promise of round-the-clock activity for up to 30 days a year. These may not be broken promises yet, but these increasing demands certainly stretch our credulity at their claims of being a good neighbor. We've been assured by Batuminas Roadway that trucks would clean up spills, cover their loads, and maintain sufficient mufflers, that in the CUP, it is only required for Batuminas Roadway's own trucks and equipment on-site. Just recently, a complaint was issued against Zakowski Trucking Services at our very own Planning Commission meeting for their inability to control changing habits of independently-owned truckers with regard to noise, hours of operation, and headlight glare. Berms and trees were suggested avenues of resolve. How many hours will be spent by you and future Columbus Planning Commissions mediating the complaints about independent truckers monitored by the deadline-driven, five-person Batuminas Roadways workforce at the site? What remediation can be offered other than repeated threats to pull the CUP, which will never in reality come to fruition? I see a future of ever-increasing and ineffective berms, taller trees, and an unhappy public. The money and time and energy fighting each other has been wasted, except on Mr. Fratellone. He's the only one buying up land where he knows, and McCombs knows, and we should know there is a future. Is it going to be the Columbus future stated in our press release that promised that we would analyze the application to ensure that it is consistent with the city's long-term goals? Or will we adopt Mr. Fratellone's goals for our future, where we will tag along for the ride, wherever that might take us? We all know the story of Walt Disney, where he bought up large amounts of land on the sly in Florida to develop Disney World. Mr. Fratellone is not Walt Disney, and we are not getting Disney World. Batuminas Roadways is not the Magic Kingdom, and its silos are not the turrets on Sleeping Beauty's castle. No, we are not asking for Disney World. We're asking for the chance to be creative and proactive and forward-thinking, similar to what the city has accomplished in the welcoming video in our City of Columbus site and our offer of free help to new businesses. If we choose to have a developer, let's find one who sees the same vision for Columbus as stated in our comprehensive plan and our ordinances. Please don't splice in Batuminas Roadways onto our Come to Columbus video. We, the people of Columbus, have awakened to the needs of our city in the face of a very ill-advised, controversial, and defining decision. There are now citizens who are willing to cooperate with you to carve out the destiny Columbus deserves. No host fee or oblique direction from a developer is worth choking out the opportunity for real growth now in our tax base and destroying our unique community character displayed in the I-35 corridor. In conclusion, to the City Council, I speak to you as one of your concerned constituencies. We have proven we have a legitimate, sizable voice, and we are willing to cooperate in developing our city along parameters previously mentioned. We understand Columbus must prepare for the inevitable influx of population and development. We love not being a next to Forest Lake. Thank you. We recognize and applaud your efforts in attracting desirable additions to our city and hope we are allowed a chance to explore alternatives before this pivotal decision. We can retain our rural character and still have an understanding that businesses of like mind will bring prosperity and help support our tax base. Don't let Mr. Fratellone and Batuminas Roadway manipulate us into a hasty decision that will pigeonhole us into a place where we cannot fulfill our destiny as a small but cohesive group of citizens than can have it all if we work together. To the Planning Commission, maybe your vote on the current CUP won't stop the council's approval, but you can send a message that this is not what Columbus is about. Please do not recommend approval of this CUP. Again, we're counting on you. I would also like to make one more comment, and that is that you discussed something with Barb Bobic a few minutes ago, and I just want you to know that, you know, she wouldn't say it, but I have to say that it was, in regards to Batuminas Roadways, it was one of our council members that came to her and said to her and some of your other people in this community that we were too late and that we had had our chance. And this was on August 2nd, 2017. Thank you.
I'm going to have to call in some lifelines here to extend my time, so I need at least three of you guys.
Two here, three here.
Okay, heard it. I want to hear that beep in three minutes.
I got a few left, though.
All right.
My name is Janet Haglund, and I live at 14025 Juilliard Street Northeast in Columbus. The fifth habit Stephen Covey wrote about in The Seven Habits of Highly Effective People was to seek first to understand and then be understood. So like most people, I tend to seek first to be understood because I want to get my point across. We are all guilty of this to some various degrees, and unless we consciously choose another path. So I'm going to frame my testimony with this mindset in trying to understand the council and the Planning Commission's point of view on this matter and align or contrast this view with those of the citizens who are understandably wary of this proposal. The two reasons I have heard that are motivating the council towards accepting this proposal to build an asphalt plant on the triangle of land between the two I-35 interstate is to bring much-needed revenue to our city and to have a private citizen sell their land. I would like to hear the rationalization as to whether it is the city's responsibility to help a private landowner sell their property. I think most of us would consider that a conflict of interest. So let's talk about the revenue aspect, because at least we can all agree that this would be a good thing. According to the figures provided in the McCombs report previously, and this was submitted to the council and also from his testimony on the 11/15 public hearing, the net impact of tax revenue to the city from the combined asphalt-concrete facility is $21,600. So please note, this is without the concrete facility, which is a Phase II of the CUP. Without that concrete facility, the net revenue is $9,814. Compare this with the city's tax revenue of the Holiday Gas Station, which is $16,230, or Gander Mountain, which is $106,832. Mr. McCombs noted that in a recently constructed 100,000-square-foot light industrial building on 6.75 acres in Blaine, if that were located in Columbus, that would generate for the city $74,000. It appears that there could be other businesses that would generate the same or more tax revenue than the asphalt plant without the negative impacts on the community. This is acknowledged in Mr. Peterson's January 10th letter to the council, where he proposes to pay a voluntary estimated $75,000 to $100,000 annual reimbursement to the city. Note that this would only start once the facility reached full production, which is estimated to be 12/31/19, two years from now. At least that's the date that was provided in the letter. And the actual amount would be based on tonnage of asphalt produced and concrete crushed annually. So there is a potential that it would be less than what is projected in the letter. But what is more troubling to me is that this is billed as a reimbursement of administrative expenses in connection with issuing, administering, and enforcing the conditional use permit and monitoring and inspecting the project. The reimbursement is not revenue, folks. It's a payback of expenses already incurred, usually at a one-to-one ratio. So I don't think we should include this as a payment of revenue.
Number seven.
Excuse me?
Number seven.
Right. We shouldn't include this as a payment as revenue if we presume that the city is incurring these administrative expenses first. That would be a break-even scenario. The fee is not continuous. It would be suspended once Batuminas Roadways is required to pay any utility project costs until those costs are paid in full, but no timeframe is provided. So my question is to better understand the council and the Planning Commission's position on revenue generated. If this is a reimbursement of administrative expenses, what are the actual expenses that are being incurred by the city, so we can better understand what the margin is, if there is any? Is it legal to call something a reimbursement if it's not actually reimbursing the incurred expenses? And from a tax standpoint, which is truly recurring revenue, wouldn't another type of business, even a gas station, be a better economic choice? In addition to the minimal revenue impact, one has to consider the potential of decreasing property values. From the Cushman and Wakefield diagram provided in the CUP, there are 403 households or 1,284 people within a two-mile radius of the proposed plan. This circle encompasses three communities, Columbus, Silo Lakes, and just the edge of Centerville. So the impact is also on our surrounding communities. The Blue Range Environmental Defense League documented a 27% decrease in property values on homes located within a mile of an asphalt plant in North Carolina, Pinolia, I think that's how you pronounce it. This was based on the tax assessor documents from between 1995, when the asphalt plant was small and outputting 150 tons per hour, and 1996, after the asphalt plant had increased capacity to 325 tons an hour. Tax officials in that county confirmed that the plant's increased production did prompt the county to reduce the property values. The brochure included in the CUP for the Gen Core Ultra Plant states that it's capable of producing between 150 to 800 tons an hour. I'm estimating, based on the projected annual reimbursement, which is based on tons of asphalt produced, that BRI is planning to operate at at least 350 tons an hour. Mr. Peterson also included a letter from Jeff Meehan of KW Commercial and BRI Supplemental Materials, addressing the property value question. Mr. Meehan compared property sales located within a one-mile radius from an existing asphalt plant and compared that to sales of comparable properties in a one-to-four-mile distance from the existing plant. While this is interesting data, I have two concerns. First, there is always bias when a reporting body is paid by somebody to do an analysis where a certain outcome would benefit that funder. In my world of medical research, where I work every day, this is why industry-sponsored clinical trials are viewed with far less confidence than government or foundation-sponsored clinical trials, where there's no motivation for a particular outcome. The other issue I have is that this is not a before asphalt plant, after asphalt plant comparison in the control group, which is only located one to four miles from the plant, but still likely see a negative impact to their property values just from proximity to the plant. So they would not differ greatly from those that were within the one mile, and that would... Sorry. Difference in value for the control group and households within the one mile would not differ greatly and would be dependent on how many control group properties were within the one-to-two-mile zone versus the three-to-four-mile zone, and none of this detail was provided. So it's suspect. The loss of property values also impacts our property tax revenue in the city of Columbus. And using an average home value in Columbus and the lowest percentage loss figure of 27%, that translates to more than $76,000 per affected household. Now, I don't have access to the number of those 403 households that are in Columbus versus in Lionel Lakes, but you guys do. So do the math and determine what the potential is for decreased property taxes collected. So we can probably read to disagree on the magnitude of the impact on property values, but I think we can all agree that it will not increase anybody's property value, and it will likely only be neutral to those located more than three miles away. So for the 400-plus residents in the two-mile impact zone, there will be an impact, likely negative, depending on where you are located in conjunction to the plant and to the county road with the 500 to 800 daily truck traffic servicing that plant. There are also legal ramifications to the city related to this concern. On August 17th, 2011, an attorney named John Lang published a report in Finance and Commerce titled "Lost Real Estate Value at Issue in Zoning Cases." In this article, he states, "When rezoning decreases a property's value, owners think they should be compensated." He cites two Minnesota cases, Dekook v. Rochester and McShane v. Faribault, as these two cases were upheld in the Minnesota Supreme Court. And when the amended ordinance was designed to specifically benefit a public or governmental enterprise and cause substantial and measurable decline in market values of the property, the court ruled that it constituted a compensable taking, and the judgment was entered in favor of the residents. So please keep that in mind. Lastly, I seek to better understand the impact on this plant and our economic development opportunities for Columbus. The McCombs report states, "Asphalt plants and concrete batch plants are industrial plants with large piles of sand and aggregates, rubble, concrete, and asphalt, and crushed concrete, and piles up to 50 feet," although we know that in the CUP, it's 35 in this application. The image is completely different from that of typical industrial buildings. These large piles would be the signature gateway image to Columbus on I-35B. They will clearly identify Columbus as an industrial area. This image will affect future development in the freeway corridor." And he goes on to state, "The freeway corridor is in a position to capture a growing portion of light industrial..." of light industrial development in the northeast market area. Competitive light industrial land is being absorbed in communities south of Columbus, enhancing the location of light industrial land in Columbus. Columbus is in the path of development," and he quotes Mr. John Roush of Cushman and Wakefield. "In a public hearing on June 21, 2017, when Mr. Roush commented on the light industrial development of Columbus, and in quotes, 'That is why Frank and I bought this property. We believe that the industrial companies that are going to be proceeding up 35W and 35E is coming because they're out of land in Blaine.'" So this light industrial zoning, I think, will start to get some development. Which brings me to Columbus's comprehensive plan and the detriment this plan will have on that vision. In that plan, we state that the conflicts -- I'm sorry. In that plan, the conflicts between the approved text amendment and the proposed asphalt plant are as follows. "The plan calls for light industrial uses to be without visibility from I-35. This is a major concern for us citizens. The proposed asphalt plant, regardless of the changes the city makes, the light industrial zone definition is highly visible from I-35. The light industrial district as defined in the plan will now be inconsistent with that in the new zoning language. We've looked into at least 15 other municipalities that have asphalt plants, none are in light industrial districts." And this is also stated in the McCombs report. "The definition of a light industrial district in the comp plan does not include a heavy industrial use such as an asphalt plant. The plan policy is to intensify commercial industry along the Lake Drive to maintain the rural character of the city and to be compatible with the adjacent residential properties. This asphalt plant will be right next to residential properties, within 350 feet of some. The owners of the plant rejected the Lake Drive location because they didn't want at the expense of hooking up to utilities. The zoning ordinance language changed that to allow a phase-in to connection to the utilities in the light industrial zone to accommodate this business. There are major incompatibilities with the proposed location of the asphalt plant in the I-35 corridor and the existing and future residential properties. Future development of multi-unit housing in this area will cease with this asphalt plant, and the developer for current senior housing and development currently under construction adamantly opposes this plan. They would not have chosen that location had they known the plans for the asphalt plant, and this letter is on trial with the city. This will work in opposition to the mandate I heard for the new comp plan from our city planner, which is for Columbus to expand its multi-unit housing options as well as for lower-income housing options to accommodate increased population projections. Developers are not going to put residential units next to an asphalt plant. They wouldn't be able to rent or sell the units." And it made me sad to hear Mr. Sternberg reflect in an earlier meeting that there are no affordable housing in Columbus that our kids could afford and therefore they won't --
You're out of lifelines too.
Pardon?
You're out of lifelines, unless somebody else wants to go.
I need another one.
She said three, right?
Yeah. I've only got about two minutes left.
Nineteen through twenty-four.
Okay.
What number?
Okay. Made me sad that Mr. Sternberg reflects that there's no affordable housing in Columbus and our kids could afford, and there won't be any if the asphalt plant goes in. Finally, we can hardly develop a pedestrian-friendly development standard when the CUP for an asphalt plant estimates five to eight hundred three-axle dump trucks racing up and down the only road that leads to the freeway. It'll be difficult enough for cars to compete on that road level and pedestrians. So this is what I'm asking of you. This is a complex issue that has not been adequately discussed or researched by the planning commission or the council. It is long-range implications for the city from an economic development and quality of life standpoint. Don't rush a decision. Do your research. Consider other points of view from non-conflicted parties. Crunch your numbers. Consult with the Met Council. If after you've done that, if the pros still weigh the cons, then you can bless the CUP with a clear conscience and we can talk about what conditions should be added to provide adequate oversight and protection.
Number nineteen? Nineteen?
Nineteen.
Thank you. Welcome.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm Arlen Lowgren. I live at 14063 Furman Street Northeast in Columbus. I've been a resident here since 1981, 36 years or more. I know that there has been an appeal filed on the council's decision to approve the text amendment to the ordinance. I do not understand that the council and the city has complied with the 10-day notice period for a hearing on that appeal, and I'm wondering where we stand and whether this body has any authority to move forward any further on approval of a cup when there is appeal pending. The appeal was dated January 11, 2018, and delivered to the city clerk on January 12, 2018. Unless that appeal is heard and a decision on that appeal is rendered, no further action can be made on the CUP that you are asked to decide. It's in derogation of the statute and 462.357, and it's in a derogation of the appellate process. It denies due process to the appellant's, and it's arbitrary and capricious. No action on the cup should proceed at this hearing. Moving ahead would invite legal proceedings to interrupt the process until the appeal hearing has taken place and a considered opinion has been rendered on that appeal. Moving ahead to the substance of my remarks, and I'm wondering if the council or the city has even presented the appeal to the city attorneys and whether any action is being taken to set up that appeal, that hearing. The asphalt plan is wrong for Columbus. The overwhelming majority of the registered voters in Columbus agree it's wrong. No matter how wonderful a business and necessary that business is to society, it is wrong for Columbus. The area in Columbus where it's planned to go is not the right place. It is not a net moneymaker for the Columbus. If you recommend this CUP without substantial safeguards built back into the cup, any action by the council approving this on your recommendation can be perceived as an unconstitutional taking that can ultimately cost the city of Columbus much more than any host fees or other cash inducements made by Batumis can ever cover. Any action approving the cup by the city council on your recommendation will be viewed as a regulatory taking. This is not the way, even temporarily, to address any city cash issues. Please do not recommend the CUP even with strong safeguards. It is just not right for Columbus and its rural nature, but also the monetary cost of what can be considered a regulatory taking. Thank you for your time. Please do what is right.
Number twenty? Number twenty? Patrick Stevens?
I think he donated his time. He donated it to the other --
Anyone up? Does anyone have a deal?
Twenty?
Twenty and twenty-four gave up.
Twenty and twenty-four gave up their time.
Why a twenty? Four, not twenty.
Can I have thirty seconds?
I haven't used your time on anybody, so knock yourself out.
I'm here. Thank you. Thank you for seeing me, council. I'm actually here as a Hugo resident. We moved to Hugo five years ago. Quality life. We live on two and a half acres. We have deer running through our backyard. We are five miles away as the crow flies, direct line to your proposed plant. And I don't care what you say about those safeguards and the company wants to tell you. There are enough studies on environmental pollution and the toxic effects of emitting harmful chemicals such as formaldehyde and benzene into our air. My children run around our backyard. There's been a lot of talk today about being a good neighbor. I'm here to tell you, Columbus, right now, the actions you're taking are anything but a good neighbor. You've got your own citizens to think about and care about, and it's right, they're right. Your property values, if there's takings of land, when you destroy the economic value of a home to the point it's considered a taking by law. Therefore, city of Columbus, there's going to be compensation if they find that. You've got neighbors to think about, not in addition, and we are adamantly opposed to this. This is not okay in our backyard. We did not move here thinking we're going to be five miles from a toxic pollution-emitting asphalt plant. Want to let you know, that's our opinion. There's a lot more where we came from, guys. We're just getting warmed up. There's a lot of people that have just begun to hear about what you're proposing to do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm on the record.
Patrick Stevens. I'm an attorney and a resident of Hugo, Minnesota.
Thank you.
Okay, for the record, my name is Ed Agner. I live at 21221 Everton Avenue, Forest Lake, Minnesota. So I am not a resident of Columbus. And in the interest of full disclosure, I am a member of the Forest Lake City Council. I'm a past member of the Planning Commission of Forest Lake. I am not here to represent the council or the city in any way. I am here as a taxpayer and a resident of Forest Lake. So with that on the record, I would like to say that as a past member of a planning commission, I understand what your task is and what you are expected to do. Now, you do have some guidelines. You have a compromise comp plan that clearly this asphalt plant does not fit. And in all the training, I believe you were trained by the League of Cities, you should use those tools. There are past members on this planning committee yourselves that had input into that plan. It's a very good plan, and it was zoned as light industrial. I agree with the previous statements. This is not light industrial. I will not rehash all the safety things. You've heard this backward, forward, every which way, and that's a matter of personal preference as you, as residents of Columbus. What I am pleading, what I'm asking, is that what you people do in Columbus will have a huge impact of what this quarter is going to look like coming to your community and my community. It's also going to impact property values, as has been stated. It's going to impact the environment. I live on Clear Lake. No one's talked about water. No one's talked about lakes. This stuff is in the air. We certainly don't need more pollution. What worried me is when the engineer was up here talking, there was one word that stood out to me. And when he talked about, "These things can't happen," and the word he used was "if." That's a mighty big "if." These things can and will happen, and the question is, what do you want your community to look like? You are charged up there as members of the planning commission to represent your community. Those are the tools you need to look at. You need to say, "What is best for my neighbors, the people that I live with, and the future of this community?" And I would think if you look in the mirror and you say, "What am I supposed to do?" When you advise that council, you need to be perfectly honest with yourselves and not be a personality contest and say, "What is most popular with the council?" That's the least of it. What does your community want? What fits your comp plan? And those are the tools you should look at. Those are the tools you should use when you make your decision. Thank you.
Name is Tom Olson. I live at 13332 Lyons Street, Columbus. I've been here before and after. Last few people, I'm surprised are even continuing. What I want to talk about is the traffic study, the CHAS or AH54 study. This information I have is from Anoka County Highway Department. It's back consulting from one of the cup appendices, J. McCombs Group, MnDOT. Traffic volume is not the only consideration, as you can see from the MnDOT vehicle impact comparison that I have up there. Wear and tear and dollars and downtime to maintain a road need to be included. I'm going to give you a little high-level background of how the highway department calculates the cost and design life of a road. They use a tool to calculate an E-SAL value. You can see a car equivalent of one, you'd have to have for a three- or more-axle truck, the equivalent would be 163. In other words, one truck down the road is equivalent of 163 cars. I talked to Anoka County Highway Department. They gave me some following analysis. I asked them to run, and they provided this. For 260 trucks per day, they used single-unit three- and four-axle trucks for their calculations. And this was a few things, and I'll just spat them around here. The current design of the 54 is for 800,000 ESALs. If you were to have 260 BR truck trips, if it had been designed for that, they would have had to design it for 1.2 million ESALs. The road improvement cost to do that would have been approximately $200,000 for just County Road 54 going north. They didn't give me any cost estimates if they were to do that going south. Right now, the road is about seven years old with current usage of about 35%, which they've used up 280,000 ESALs. And they predicted a current lifespan of 20 years is what they work with. At its current design of 800K, and using the E-SAL values with the 20 or the additional trucks that are going to be on to that, time span is going to go down from 20 to 15 years. That doesn't mean the useful life of the road wave will go down, but it just means it could be there or it could have to be repaired a lot earlier. In their case, you know, four years earlier. That's maintenance costs. I got another one. And if you remember the cups back consulting study, the peak road trips is 520, so you can double that. Now, these don't include 13-hour, six-to-seven per deordance, or the additional hours for weekend traffic for required projects, or if you were to add a future concrete plant, which would add another 244 trips average and 488 trips per day. That would -- and the second study they did for me was if they upped that number to 500 per day. There it would cost an additional $100,000 to -- and reduce the road life from another two -- by another two years to 14 years. So if they add all of these together, you could be seeing 1,000 trucks between the asphalt company, and if they put a future concrete batch plant in there, that's another big hit and a lot of dollars to maintain that road. There'd be major things that would have to come from that. In conclusion, the BR traffic count on CSAH54 may be under the design capacity, but that doesn't tell the entire story. All traffic isn't the same. A car does not require the same road upkeep as a three- or four-axle truck. The taxpayers will be on the hook for all the city or all the improvements in upkeep. The road's going to be under repair more often, and as a single-axis road to the businesses there, it will have an impact on their customers. It's the wrong location. The planning commission should take more time than just tonight to review all of the testimony that you've heard and fix this audio for the other people. Sometimes it doesn't work. Take your time.
Well, that's the end of the list, so I'm going to close the hearing with the right to reopen if become necessary. So discussion on the CUP or the -- So, discussion on the CUP or the plat?
You need to make one notation on the, I guess we could have Dean, he had a few pieces that he wanted to make some statements about. Is that right?
Sure. I'll make a couple of clarifications in my memo to the planning commission. We also received in your packet today a memo from Minnesota Department of Transportation. They automatically get a plat review for any property that abuts any state roadway, and so these comments are in response to the plat abutting Interstate 35E and W. And they're simply indicating that they will require review of the drainage permit to determine that current drainage rates impacting the ditches along the interstates won't change. That information is something that will ultimately be part of a permit that's pending from Rice Creek Watershed District, but I would like to add that, and I'll get to locations, I'd like to add that requirement to both the recommendations on the plat at a point in time that you might consider that, as well as in addition to any recommendations regarding the conditional use permit. In the memo that you received from me on page one, this is just a typo on my behalf, item number eight, it incorrectly describes the size of the office-lab vehicle maintenance building. At 4,000 feet, that number is 4,600. Later on in the report, I have the correct number, so that's just a clarification. If you were to consider adding something in the plat review regarding the MinDOT comments, I would add after Rice Creek Watershed District or number five on there that this has to meet the requirements of Minnesota Department of Transportation. In the recommendations regarding the conditional use permit, I simply left out a condition that is applicable regarding the exterior building materials. We have design requirements within the light industry district, as we do in other districts. They are different in different zoning districts. In the light industry district, and again, this is just an omission on my behalf, but if you would consider, I would look at an insert, and this is on page six of my report, within the conditional use permit is contingent upon plan review and approval by the building official. I'd put a comma after detailed plan review and insert including revised exterior building materials. So in other words, the exterior materials of any buildings in here facing public roads or abutting dissimilar zoning districts would be required at 50%. It doesn't meet that requirement, so that needs to be resubmitted. I'm happy to go over that in more detail, but I would appreciate that you make that consideration in any kind of recommendation. Also, I don't care where you put it, but perhaps after number seven that talks about CUP contingent upon recommendations of Rice Creek Watershed District, I would add one that indicates the CUP is contingent upon recommendations of Minnesota Department of Transportation. And again, that's consistent with that memo that was received yesterday. On the very last page of my report, there's pretty standard language. It's item number 22, the very last condition of this. It's standard in most of our requirements. After I submitted this to the planning commission, and it was already included in your packets for distribution, the city attorney indicated that the phrase in the very first sentence that says, "In its sole discretion, be stricken." And for the benefit of the public that may not be familiar with what I'm describing it, this is a default mechanism, and it would now read in the event the city council determines that the asphalt plant is not being operated in accordance with any term or condition contained herein, the CUP may be revoked by the city upon proper notice and hearing. The city will notify regulatory authorities that have issued licenses or permits in connection with the CUP of any such revocation. This language is consistent with state statute. We do have to provide notice. Anyone operating under a permit in the community has an opportunity to correct that provision. If it's not done within that specified timeframe, we hold a public hearing, and if there's still no satisfaction, that is when you would revoke a permit. So I just want to clarify, strike that one provision that says, "In its sole discretion." That's a recommendation of the city engineer. I want to clarify just a couple of things on the basis of comments from the public, and I don't, as an individual, I don't object with anybody's position that they're taking the presentation of facts or miss factual information. I only want to say that tonight, the matter of whether an asphalt plant is allowable is not anymore at the discretion of this body or the city council. The decision was made and the action was taken that an asphalt plant is allowable within this zoning district. At the time that we receive an application, which we did in December, we then review that for consistency with our ordinance requirements. So I simply want to make clear in your discussion, it isn't a debate whether this is the right use or not. It is a conditional use allowable in your zoning ordinance, and I have attempted to assemble the maximum number of conditions that are applicable based upon what authority we have in our city code. The other thing I want to comment about, this relates to, I think, a lot of questions and good comments about concerns over air quality, water quality, noise, odor. These are regulations that are established by the federal government. By law, we have absolutely no authority. We cannot establish regulations. We cannot add to regulations that are in the federal code of regulations or what might be prescribed in rules by the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. They're responsible for that monitoring and enforcement. I think there were questions that, as a safeguard, it could be considered by the city to require certain monitoring, whether it's wells or air quality. We don't have that authority. There are thresholds established in both federal regulations, and they are reiterated in all state regulations. In this case, whether it's through the Health Department or the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, that established thresholds for which types of contaminants can be emitted under whatever the particular use may be. We have no authority in that. In the information that you have-
I interrupt. You are incorrect. This city council has the power to say no.
Yep.[1105.65][1105.65](APPLAUSE). If I may, if I may, I'm not going to argue with anyone. I'm simply going to reiterate, we cannot replace or exceed federal standards regarding these emissions or controls. That's the only point I wish to make. Beyond that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have about specific requirements that are included in here, or perhaps any that you feel might be missing.
Any questions?
No, sir.
I don't.
Mr. Chair, I have a clarification. If we look on page A6, this is the email that we received from the City of Lionel Lakes, and a week earlier, it was addressed by the presenter, Matt Kent. I think we have the wrong boundary line. If we look at the email, it says, "On behalf of the City of Lionel Lakes, I want to reiterate our concerns expressed in the letter." Then it talks about, "We appreciate the standard role of Blue Hill Spruce provided along the south line." And this would be the south line. Then they go on to say, "We would respectfully request consideration to extend landscaping on the easterly of the eastern edge of the Stormwater Pond." And I believe they're talking this way, on the easterly line. So are you saying, as I read this, because they ask about enhancing the screening and the dischafing and fencing?
That would be for you.
May I respond first? The Stormwater Pond is the structure that is limited to the south side of the property. There are existing wetlands, and there is wetland replacement along the easterly property boundary, which is abutting Interstate 35. Unless somebody's here from the City of Lionel Lakes, my take on this was, the landscaping that's proposed does not extend quite the entire length of the pond that's being constructed. And I think they were asking your consideration. That would go, I mean, you can see the depression that's shaped adjacent to the south property line. It extends maybe two-thirds of the distance from West Freeway Drive to Interstate 35E. I think they're simply asking that there be consideration to extend that to the easterly edge of the pond, not the wetland complex, but the Stormwater Pond that's being constructed.
Do you have a further question for the engineer?
No, I just wanted to make sure that you took into consideration their request.
So they're asking for more landscaping along that boundary? More buffering? So how do we feel about more buffering over there?
Mr. Chair, are we talking about an area that would be visible from the highway? On the top side of it? The top side of the diagram?
I don't remember which, is this, this is where we got it?
So it'd be, is that an A up there?
Can I address this?
Yeah, yeah, great.
Can I get clear? I'll just point up here. So, we're proposing to plant trees along the south edge to above right here. Once you get here, there's existing trees and the building, green fence here, and you can see the existing stand of trees here. So we staff the spruce tree screen approximately here. I think the city is requesting that we extend it up, and I don't think we would have great resistance to that. It's just we didn't because of the existing trees and the screening that was provided from the fence and the building. And once you get east of here, this is all wet. So to put trees up here, I think would be, it wouldn't-
I have a question for you.
Go ahead.
Dean, may I ask you, please?
Yes, sir.
So, I believe the water monitoring and the air quality are important things, as a lot of people did. So what's, you said the city could be more restrictive than the PCA or something?
The law is clear, and there are a number of cases, and our city attorney can comment on this more eloquently than I. The decision to do monitoring is based upon levels of risk. Typically, those levels of risk are items that trigger thresholds for a mandatory environmental impact assessment, or even more, and, you know, full environmental impact statements. And I don't want to call this facility or this activity routine, but it does not approach those thresholds where the regulations that are in place call for that level of monitoring. As some of you know, I used to be the city planner in the city of Rosemount. Coke Refining is located in Rosemount. There are extensive water quali, or air quality, as well as water quality monitoring systems in place on the basis of that particular activity. It's a different scale. I'm not aware of any that are here. Whether you wish to pursue that, I would suggest that you discuss that more closely with your city engineer and look at options to negotiate that, because I do not believe you have the authority to require that when you don't regulate that system. It's not part of our permit authority. It's not in our zoning ordinance. I'm not suggesting it doesn't give a comfort level to anyone that may be in the audience or an immediate neighbor. I'm just saying it's not in our ordinance, and it's typically not something that's done on this type of activity. If I may, in layperson terms, I'm not an engineer, I'm not a water quality expert, but I've been involved in city planning and regulatory matters for 40 years. The biggest risk for water contamination relates to oil storage that's on the facility. These facilities, and I don't care which community you're located in, are retrofitted with containment facilities. The containment facilities are designed with capacity that far exceeds the maximum storage of oils that are used routinely in this. If there is a spill, and I think one of the residents raised the question about, how do you know? What if there's an accident, you walk away from it? If there's a tornado, a calamity, an airplane crashes into a tank and it starts spilling, there is a containment facility that's required as a part of permitting for this, which totally contains this. It doesn't get into the groundwater system. The containment facility's got walls around it, it's sloped, it's got liners that prevent this from getting into the soil. That's the majority of risk. Others may say, well, you got stockpiles of asphalt rubble, shouldn't we be monitoring that risk? If we should be monitoring it, it would be part of the requirements by the Pollution Control Agency. It's not. And I'm not in a position to have any comfort level to say that that is something you should do, but I also believe there are limitations on what you can do, because it's not, the legislation is occupied by others. And that's the federal government. Our permit merely says, they must operate, whether it is noise, air quality, water quality, odors, consistent with federal requirements. Those are monitored by the state of Minnesota. If there's a failure in that, that is a violation of the permit, and they either have to cure the problem, or you terminate the permit.
Yeah, what about the, someone brought up, there is an appeal or something. What is that all about? Jake?
Mr. Jay, Chair-
I mean, Mr. Chairman, or Mr. Doncic.
Missioners, Mr. Chair. An appeal was received on January 12th. State statute is very clear that a legislative action, such as the adoption of an ordinance, is reviewed by district court. So we will be preparing a letter. We have a letter prepared, and we will be returning the appeal to the applicant or the appellant. It's effectively, it's defective appeal.
And we can still move forward?
Yeah, there's no reason to not move forward. The appeal has no effect on the CUP and plat applications.
Thank you.
Yeah?
Motion, sir?
I was just going to remind everybody, if we do motions, we need one on the plat first and then one on the CUP.
One concurrent, or?
Yeah, in that order.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we, the planning commission, move forward to the city council. The Batuminus Roadways preliminary plat- the Batuminas Roadways preliminary plat with the findings of fact 1 through 18, recommendations 1 through 8, along with the recommendations of the planner, with the recommendation for approval.
I'd second that.
Do you have a second on the motion, discussion on the motion?
I have clarification. Would that motion and second include the correction on the finding of fact number eight from 4,000 feet to 4,600 feet? And would it include the addition in the recommendations that the requirements of the Minnesota Department of Transportation be met?
Be met, yes.
That would become number 10. Okay.
So call for a vote.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Does it need clarification? So it did not include the extra screening for landlines?
It did not.
It did not.
So now we need the motion on the CUP.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we, the planning commission, move forward to the city council with a recommendation of approval that Batuminas Roadways Incorporated CUP to include the findings of fact 1 through 25, and recommendations 1 through 22, along with the recommendations of the planner.
Discussion on motion. He's lumped some.
Clarification for the motion and second. Previously, it indicated in recommendation number five that the CUP would be contingent upon detailed plan review and then adding, including revised exterior building materials and approval by the building official.
That is correct.
And then item number 23 would be new requirement to make certain the conditional use permit is contingent upon the recommendations of the Minnesota Department of Transportation.
So we have a second. Call for a vote.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Aye.
Aye. So these will go before the council next Wednesday? Next Wednesday? That's included with the plat, I believe, isn't it, the site plan review?
Dean, can you clarify, was the site plan included with the CUP?
Yes.
Is that in the greatest part of the CUP? Okay.
Yes.
It's included with the findings.
Jeez, are you?
Maybe do a three-minute recess?
We'll do a three-minute recess. So we have another public hearing here for, public hearing and discussion for sanctuary at Howard Lake preliminary plat variance, pages 1 through 19, and pages A9 through 20 in the enclosure. And at this time, I'd like to ask the recording secretary to read the notices published.
Notices hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the City of Columbus Planning Commission on Wednesday, January 17, 2018, at 7:00 PM, or as soon thereafter as parties may be heard, in the City Hall located at 16319 Kettle River Boulevard, Columbus, Minnesota, to consider a request, variances to Chapter 7E of the Columbus City Code to reduce the setback from the OHWL of Howard Lake from 150 feet to 50 feet, and to reduce the shore impact zone from 75 feet to 50 feet for development in the CR, Community Retail Zoning District. The hearing shall continue until all evidence and testimony has been received. Property owners Susan M. Mulvihill and Michael M. Mulvihill, applicant Howard Lake Development LLC, Jay Gustafson, property location 17.17 acres, North Lake Drive West, North Lake Drive West of 9141 Lake Drive, Columbus, Minnesota, legal description as published. Submitted in the Forest Lake Times on Thursday, December 27, 2017, published in the Forest Lake Times, and posted on Thursday, January 4, 2018.
Thank you, Karen, and if I didn't thank you earlier, thank you for reading that one, too. At this time, if the applicants could please come forward and, if you could just state your names and addresses for the record, and then give us some background on what it is you're asking.
Jay Gustafson with Howard Lake Development, 11044 Zambroda Court in Blaine.
Wayne Jacobson, and the owner of Jacobson Environmental in Brooklyn Center, Minnesota.
Thank you. Do you want to take it away, or do you want to give us a little background on what it is you're asking, the variance request?
The variance request primarily is requesting a variance to the 150-foot setback from the ordinary high water line to be 50 feet from the ordinary high water line, which would also then subsequently request a variance to the lakefront impact zone, which is 50%, of the setback from the OHW, or 75 feet. We would be requesting that also be 50 feet.
Any questions for the applicant?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Okay, I'm going to open the hearing to the public. Anyone here from the public? If you guys want, you can take a seat, and we'll let the public come forward.
My name is Jason Spiegel. I'm North Metro Area Hydrologist for Minnesota Department of Natural Resources. Due to statutory requirements, we are included in the comments that, or the notification for the variance that's sent out, and we have a right to comment. So I'm here representing DNR for comments tonight.
Did you state your name and address?
Jason Spiegel. My address would be Minnesota DNR, 1200 Warner Road, St. Paul, Minnesota.
Thank you.
That is my office. First, I'd like to start out by, you know, saying thank you to the commissioner and the commissioners and the chairman for allowing us to have this public hearing. I would like to offer you an opportunity to ask me any questions that you may have about my comment letter that was submitted last week to the city. I believe that was the first part of your packet regarding this variance, the first...
Any questions on the DNR letter?
Okay. With that said, I'll move on to, this afternoon, I received the staff report and a memo from the city attorney. So tonight, my comments are going to be directed to the findings that the commission is considering in a separate part of their packet. I'll let my comment letter stand for my original comments. So first, I'd like to start off by addressing the city attorney's memo. I just want to clarify that we agree with the attorney's assessment that DNR's authority in this matter is not to grant or deny a variance, right? That lies solely with the city. Our role is purely as a member of the public to provide comment and direction to the city when a variance is requested. Statewide shoreline rules require local governments to send those notices to us, and that we make comment if we have concerns. We generally only comment when we see that a proposed variance does not meet the statutory criteria for granting variances, and poses a threat to public waters that the shoreline rules are intended to protect. In this particular case, the requested variance would result in extreme deviation from the statewide shoreline standards and the city's adopted shoreline ordinance, and would undermine the protections of Howard Lake that those shoreline standards and city ordinances provide. So in going into the staff report, I just took a quick read of it this afternoon, and I want to address three specific topics within that that were addressed. The reasonable manner section, the practical difficulties and uniqueness, and the essential character. For reasonable manner, nowhere in the city ordinance or the statewide shoreline rules is there any, is there any reference to the visible water line for determining setbacks from lakes? The reference for setbacks is and always has been the ordinary high water. The city should have known this and committed to developers early on in the process. Furthermore, wetland fringe abutting the lake is hydrologically connected to part of the lake, and is susceptible to water quality impacts from development, as is the lake. Particular vegetation in the land within the shore impact zone is removed and/or altered as is proposed. Moving on to practical difficulties and uniqueness. The staff report states that the applicant had no control over the establishment of shoreline development standards that affect the property, nor any control over the natural features on the property, and that the fact the property has so many wetlands is unique. The fact that this property has wetlands is not unique. Many lakes have wetlands that surround them. The site was known to contain many wetlands and to be subject to shoreline regulations before the development was proposed. As such, the applicant should have been made aware of these limitations, and the development should have been designed accordingly. There appear to be other opportunities within this development area to provide greater density outside of the shore impact zone and the setback area. What is not clear is if the developer has considered or proposed other design alternatives that would provide the needed density for MUSA, which is the standards of the Metropolitan Council and in your comp plan, and better meet the required shoreline standards. Moving on to essential character. The staff report mentions that the proposed development is compatible with the community retail and suburban residential overlay, but it does not make a mention of the shoreline overlay district, which is kind of what we're talking about tonight. The extensive vegetation removal and land disturbance within the shore impact zone and number of structures proposed within the required setback are not compatible with the shoreline overlay and will essentially alter the character of the sensitive shoreline area. And this was not addressed in the essential character portion of the findings that were shared with the council. Moving on, I would like to make quick mention of the other two as well in my letter. Specifically, I addressed in somewhat detail the comprehensive plan, and I want to just highlight to the city that you have goals both for growth, and you have rules to, or goals to protect environmental and natural systems. There's ways that development can occur that absolutely satisfies both of those. And approving a variance that reduces the required setback by your ordinance by a third doesn't appear to be attempting to do that. So I would like to highlight that the comprehensive plan does have goals that are in conflict with the proposed variance. And then talking about the harmony and intent of the ordinance. So the purpose and intent of greater setback for natural environment lakes versus general development or other systems, as adopted by the City of Columbus, is to provide additional protection to public waters that are more susceptible to negative impact from development occurring in the shoreline area. Due to high nutrient loading, Howard Lake was listed by the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency as an impaired water body in 2006. This is on page three of my comment letter, if you want to find it. Due to management activities by DNR, Rice Creek, and other agencies, the lake has improved significantly in habitat and water quality to the point where it was removed from the impaired waters list in 2014. It is the only lake within the Rice Creek watershed, a large portion of which is within the City of Columbus, that has improved enough to be removed from this impaired waters list. So the purpose and intent of the ordinance is to provide protections, and this system has shown in the past that it is in need of those protections. So I just want to highlight that for the city, and with that, I'll take any questions or comments.
Any questions?
No.
Nope.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, and I did have one follow-up. Is this, it wasn't clear from the materials I received, is this being considered as a variance to a plat, or is it still under the PUD? I'm not clear which way the city processed the application. Is this a PUD or just a preliminary plat?
This is a variance to our own shoreline ordinance.
Right.
And it is limited to the dimensional standards of the OHWL and the shore impact zone. The plat does not trigger that review by itself, but the planned unit development conditional use permit, which then would allow all of the structures which are consistent with the city ordinance, it is inconsistent with the shoreline provisions of the ordinance.
Correct. So this is processed as a planned unit development? Is that correct?
In the sense that exceptions within the OHWL setback on a plat, a lot does not create an exception. It is the structure. So I'm answering your question the best way I can. We are accepting or allowing consideration for variances to the standards of the shoreline ordinance for those two dimensional standards in our review of the conditional use permit to allow the development.
Okay.
Which is the planned unit development.
Mr. Chair, Dean, if I may add, I think what you're asking is, is this deviation being processed as part of the PUD?
Correct.
And that is not. We had originally approved it that way. We understood that the DNR did not approve of that approach. We agreed to recommend that the applicant come back and apply for a variance separate from those PUD deviations.
And what I'm looking at in terms of comparing our variance consideration, it isn't to Coon Lake, it is this lake on property just to the west of this, owned by Mr. Stanky, the ordinary high water level and this visible shoreline, the water, if you will, where you can be in a canoe, or if you wanted to swim in that lake, where you would actually be swimming. That OHWL and the visible shoreline are extremely close together. This has a four hundred feet separation. There is a difference. This property is unique and different in that regard, on the same lake, within the same neighborhood. We have standards that we adopted in our version of the shoreline ordinance that allow agriculture to occur, not at a hundred and fifty feet setback on this lake, not outside of the shore impact zone, but fifty feet from the OHWL. And I would argue that the urban stormwater, our buffer requirements for wetlands under state law, are going to protect the integrity of this lake better with that fifty-foot lawn, if you will, than if you allowed unregulated or cultivated agriculture at that same setback. That's the comparison I talked about in here. Those are the primary differences in my mind. We have another photograph of summer vegetation, there's an extraordinary amount of cover. This is not an aesthetic issue from people using this lake. This property is not going to impact that. And so the other burden in my mind, based upon, I think Jason commented on, he quoted from his memo, not in our ordinance, what those purposes are. And they really were talking about that visual quality and protection from people, other neighbors on the lake perhaps, or users of the lake, and then the integrity of the water itself. And the focus of my whole report to you in the consideration of all of these, I'm merely relating that I don't think we're impacting this property by reducing that setback. Is it an extraordinary setback? Going two-thirds of the way back on that, if you had a thirty-feet side yard setback, and for whatever reason, I can think of maybe Coon Lake, where you've got extreme narrow little properties, and somebody says, "I can't meet that thirty feet, how about ten feet?" That's a similar relationship. You're taking two-thirds of that standard off, because the property in that instance was unique, created so long ago that they're narrow, long pencil lots, and there's not much opportunity to do things. It may be considered extraordinary in some regards that you're adjusting a dimensional standard by a hundred feet. Well, let's keep it in perspective. And I'm still sitting here saying, from a visual perspective, you can see the amount of vegetation here. We're not going to, when we have a three to four hundred feet setback from where users of the lake will be, or anyone on the opposite side of the lake will be. We're not allowing a visual intrusion here because of that extraordinary setback with this wetland basin. I'm not a soil or water scientist. We have two in this room, perhaps, that would talk about the integrity or the water quality as a result of this. We are in Rice Creek watershed district. As most of you know, it's one of the more highly regulated watersheds in the area. This project will be consistent with state buffering requirements. We have a minimum fifty-feet wetland buffer that's observed, except through averaging, there are some exceptions. We are, this project is contingent upon receiving the permit through Rice Creek watershed. That relates to the stormwater improvements for an urban level of development, specifically on this particular piece of property. So without walking through each of my individual findings, I think those are the highlights of this particular property. It is different from others on the lake. It is unique in that regard, even with respect to, again, I mentioned the Dunn-Stanky property, where he doesn't have a four hundred feet setback to that visible shoreline. It might be sixty or seventy feet. None of us went out and measured it, but you look at the other air photos that I attached to this of the lake itself, you can generally see where the edge of that wetland basin is, and that wetland basin is extremely wide, particularly in the southeastern portion of Howard Lake, but it's also very wide in this piece of property. The map that Elizabeth has here is really illustrating the ownership records. As I cited in here, the DNR already owns the vast majority of the shoreline on the lake. The exceptions include this particular property, and across the lake where we have six or seven homes that are already built, developed, I don't know the timeframe for that, and are meeting those requirements. The other peculiarity within this same neighborhood is that we have compliance with the DNR routinely throughout the entire community, because the balance of the community or the rest of the community is rural, and our rural development standards exceed, in all instances, the minimum lot areas, the density for development, the setback standards, and so forth. Yes, we do have additional backyard, or in this case, shoreline setbacks that don't apply in non-shoreline properties, but there have not been that many variances that the city has identified over the last twenty-five years that I've been involved. And this particular property, we have a dozen other properties that have been assessed for urban development. I mentioned we've got conflicting state goals and requirements, and that includes the Metropolitan Council, which requires our density on residential development to be no less than three units per acre. Is there a way to cram three units per acre residential on here? You could with attached housing, but you couldn't do that with detached housing. We are able, with the reduction in the setback from ordinary high water level, able to achieve about three point one or three point three net units per acre, if we take all the wetlands out and so forth, so it becomes consistent with that. If we had to adhere to the one hundred and fifty feet setback from the OHWL, it takes out the entire tier of homes on the north edge of the development, I forget how many it was, eleven or fourteen homes. It virtually cuts the density in half if that was met. And so my only position, with all due respect to what the DNR tries to accomplish, we're forced to make some of those same trade-offs, and we look at establishing precedents in other parts of the city every time we grant a variance. There are so few circumstances that are identical to this, I don't think establishing a precedent is going to be an issue for the city. If it was identical, I'd say approve another one. For the sake of the DNR, we have so few that would be identical to this, this isn't a dangerous precedent-setting decision by the city. There aren't any other properties that qualify or are identical to this situation. Will we have, on the remaining six, eight, ten properties that are located in the shoreline district, the same potential issue? It depends on the particular use. By our ordinance, our underlying district standards apply. You can have a fifty-feet tall commercial building on this property. If it were setback at the ordinary high water level and there was screening in place, it could, you could have an extremely large, very densely used piece of property for commercial purposes for considerably more impacts, and do that without a variance. You could also have a five or, yes, I believe it's a five-story senior citizen building here. Our residential restriction in our ordinance, I think, was approved at thirty-five feet. It didn't pay regard to multiple family uses. We weren't looking at that. So for this detached development, we're within our own ordinance standards, as you approved this planned unit development originally. It fulfills our commitments with the Metropolitan Council being on the metropolitan urban service system. We simply can't meet that setback standard, which I think in this case, the circumstances reveal are unique to this property, and with the commitments to minimize any impacts through permits with Rice Creek watershed district, I don't believe that that reduction is going to interfere with either aesthetic or hydrologic impacts on the lake. So that's my summary, without going into further detail.
One of the things that is not shown on this map is, this parcel is also owned by the DNR.
Okay. Any questions? Anybody? So has everybody read the... Because, I mean, we can just adopt this staff recommendations the way it is, if we all approve, right?
Mr. Chair, that's correct. The motion would be to adopt the staff report and the findings therein.
Okay. So there being, we would need a motion.
So moved.
So moved.
I would second that.
You have a second?
Yep.
Call for vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. So this will go before the council next Wednesday, seven o'clock, same place. Thank you. City Administrators Report.
I don't think I have anything tonight.
Planning Commissioners Report.
I have nothing to report.
Nothing.
Nothing.
I have nothing either. Mr. Pryor, you'll be at the next meeting. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Call for vote.
Aye.
Aye.